Looks like they're ready downstairs.
All right.
All right, it's called the work session to order. I guess the first thing on your agenda, minutes?
I have my lead sheet. There you go. I'll put it on my screen.
And make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion to approve and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's do, um...
Table that?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to continue tabling the item we have on 23...
Twenty-three sixteen.
Sixteen Nine Mile Point Road. There has been no movement of this application in the planning board, and this is still at the request of the applicant that we tabled the app.
That's second.
Okay. We got a motion to approve and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to tonight's agenda. You have any questions on number one? Hotchkiss Circle? Nope. Two? You had a question, I don't know, I guess we'll...
No, no. Not too much. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's either way is fine, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, you're... I guess your suggestion makes as much sense as anything, so you can do it like that unless our chairman has something to say on it.
Mm-hmm.
Three? Twenty Kings Mill Court. It's a deck.
Can I just say, if you do decide to do, you know, decide number two up there, make sure you don't forget about seeker and you gotta do that, too.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
There's my notes.
Well, let me ask you something. On the first one, on the first part of it, there's no seeker if there's no...
Have to have seeker.
Right?
Well, it's a type-two action, so no matter how you... So, I would just note when you do it that it's a type-two action.
Okay.
Before you go further review, regardless of whether you decided on appeal or grant or, you know, decided variance issue.
Sounds good to me.
So, but if you have an interpretation of the code...
I know, you don't need a seeker on interpretation of the code.
I think it still is, uh... I think it still is a type-two. It's a type-two action.
Right.
So, we're covering ourselves either way if we do it, right?
We'll make our motion. Okay. Number four, Green Court. Any questions? Now, we're gonna go through this fast. How about five? Six? Um, seven? And then the R G E one-eight?
I was just curious about, um... I've never had a case where we were proceeding with an uncoordinated review. I just didn't know how that kind of unfolded.
Separate seekers.
Separate seekers.
That's the only difference, yeah. So, like, if it was coordinated planning, you know, it'd be typically the planning board would first do the seeker, and then we would follow their lead on whatever they determined.
Okay.
So, one is not hinged upon the other tonight.
Thank you for that.
Usually, often tend to, an unlisted action, you would still do it uncoordinated like this, but sometimes, in the past, we've coordinated it, which is an option, but typically it would be uncoordinated like this.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're doing our own. Okay. Tonight's, yeah, let's... Anybody else got anything else to discuss before we break? All right, we're getting efficient here. We got fifteen minutes till the hearing, so let's close this out. We'll reconvene at seven. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. As always, our meeting tonight will take place in two parts. The first part will consist of the public hearings. Our clerk will call each matter in order. When your matter is called, the applicant can come up to the podium, tell the board the reasons, what they want, and the reasons why they think their relief should be granted. The board will then question the applicant. We will then open the floor to questions from the people out there, and we'll proceed in that order until we've completed hearing all the public hearings for the applications. The second part will take place in the back after about a five-minute recess typically. That time is generally reserved for discussion, questions, and then voting by members of the board. You're welcome to attend that, to listen. Once in a while, we do ask applicants for, to clarify things, so... But there's no necessity, there's no real requirement to attend that portion of the meeting. If you choose not to attend, and we do have eight matters tonight, so we could be here for a while before we get to that, you can call tomorrow to the building department, and they will tell you what the board determined on your application. I think that will complete my comments. Will everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberatory, and justice for all.
Huey. I know. I thought it was just me, Mike.
No, it's not. It's hot. All right, all set. Andy called the first one.
Cynthia Reno, sixteen Hotchkiss Circle, Penn Field, New York, one-four-five-two-six. Request an area variance to allow a shed with less side setback than permitted under section two-fifty-five-point-one-F-one of the code at sixteen Hotchkiss Circle. The property is owned by Cynthia Reno and is zoned R-1-15, SBL number one-three-nine-point-zero-six dash three dash three-three. Application number eighteen-Z dash zero-zero-three-eight.
Good evening. Again, just to regurgitate what Andy said, I'm here to seek a convenient, reduced-side setback requirement to install my fence. My yard is rectangular in shape. It's surrounded by a privacy fence, and it's limited level ground in order to install a fence, and, um...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Sure. I don't know if I... I can't hear you, for one thing. And the second thing is, did you say your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're always required for that. But think, it's just for the record.
No, it's okay. I'm Cynthia Reno. I own the property at sixteen Hotchkiss Circle, Penn Field, New York, one-four-five-two-six. Okay? And the purpose of me being here is I'm seeking a variance, reduced-side setback requirement for the installation of a shed. Okay? As I was stating, my backyard is surrounded by a privacy fence, and it's limited level ground to it. And the proposed action is to install the shed no more than two feet from the privacy fence on the patio level ground. The only level ground I have in the yard.
Can you describe a little bit more about the size of the shed, color, how tall it'll be, things like that?
Yes. I know I did include a picture, but I've got one here. It's eight by ten, and it'll be vinyl siding to match the color of the house. And this is the area in which I want to put it in. You can see the privacy fence, and behind the privacy fence is the neighbor's garage and trees. Okay?
Approximately, how tall is your fence right now?
Six foot.
Six foot? And approximately, how tall will the shed be?
It's eight by ten.
Height?
Yes.
Which one is it?
Eight.
Eight or ten?
Eight.
Eight foot tall? Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's what it was, yeah.
And you'll say, and it's decided to match your house?
Yes.
And describe your backyard in terms of why that space is the best space and why it couldn't be ten foot out?
Because my yard slopes down to the backyard line.
Okay.
So, in order to put a shed in on the variance of ten feet away from the lot line, no matter where I put it, I'd have to build up the land, which would be very costly. I'm on a limited budget. I'm a senior citizen. Okay? Plus, if you act, this is closer to accessibility for me, for my lawn equipment and everything. And if I go at the ten feet out, it really aesthetically, I mean, you'd be blocking my windows of my house, and if I did it from the lot line, big lot line up again, it'd be building up, plus if you act, because it's rectangular, you're almost in the middle of my yard. And for children to play in the yard or dogs, it'd be a safety concern.
Okay. So, if it was more in the middle of the yard, you'd have to actually build up the yard in that area in order to have it level and sit level, and also be able to get things in and out, you'd have to have extended area.
Definitely.
How did you determine two foot from the lot line versus one foot or three foot? Or, I mean, what's the difference? Could you go three foot? Could you go four foot?
Again, I don't want to go too far this way because the house is right here. Okay? And again, I wanted enough area in the back so you could keep it cleaned out, but not enough where children and animals could hide behind and get hurt.
Sure, sure. Can you describe what the view would be like from your neighbors of the shed or from the street if it was placed there?
Probably from the street, all you would see is probably maybe the top portion here.
Okay.
Okay? And from the neighbor, you'd see the back of it, but of course, he's got trees and bushes here that block the view into my yard anyway.
Okay.
Okay?
And will there be any lights or electricity run to the shed?
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
I got one, Mike. Have you talked to any of the neighbors? I know what we do is send out postcards to all your neighbors so everybody knows what you're doing, but have you, has anybody talked to you or have you talked to any of your neighbors?
No one's talked to me at all. The sign's been up there for well over a week, almost two weeks, in the yard. I've had no, none of my neighbors come to me. Because a lot of my neighbors have sheds, so I think they just feel like, well, she needs a shed, she needs a shed, you know?
Okay. That's all, Mike.
Are you planning to add any lighting to the shed that might shine on a property?
No.
Okay. Not lit at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
What are you gonna store in the shed?
Lawn equipment.
Okay.
Lawn mowers, snow blower, generator.
And where are you storing it presently, those things?
In my garage.
Okay. And you need to free up that space?
I do. I mean, the older I'm getting, the harder it is for me to pull the car in and then get out without hurting myself.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Anybody in your audience like to speak on this application? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Andrews, three-thirteen Valley Green Drive, Penn Field, New York, one-four-five-two-six. Request an interpretation of the code enforcement officer's determination of the minimum setback requirement for a proposed garage addition, and if the board agrees with the determination of the code enforcement officer, an area variance to allow a garage addition with less setback than permitted under section two-fifty-five-point-one-F-one of the code at three-thirteen Valley Green Drive. The property is owned by Dennis Andrews and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number one-two-four-point-two-zero dash two-dash-five. Application eighteen-Z dash zero-zero-four-two.
Okay. Hi.
Okay, I am Dennis Andrews, and I live at three-thirteen Valley Green Drive.
Okay. I think what we're gonna do for this application, since you have two applications...
Yes.
Is we'll deal with the first application, because depending on what we decide there, we will then vote. You may or may not have to go forward with the second half.
Okay, fine.
So, will you want to tell us why you think this is one...
Well, it seems that, it seems that the code compliance people have determined that my northern lot line is my rear lot line, and I contend that that's not true, that in fact, my north, north and south lines are consistent with others on the block.
Do you have a map? Excuse me. Do you have a map with you?
I actually have some... The commentary here shows it pretty good.
Okay. Do you have one you can put up to as well, and so the camera can pick it up, and the people viewing on TV can see what you're talking about?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Okay. So, the north line you're referring to is the longer line? Why don't you point to that?
Just maybe I should turn it this way.
Yep.
Say that that's north. This would be my north line, which actually is here and has a bend in it. But all the other lines up and down the street you'll see are pretty symmetrical, and everybody meets a rear lot line here to house homes that back up from Summer Glen Drive. We all have a common rear lot line. This becomes a rear lot line of some homes on Wayland, which is probably a hundred and fifty feet from my lot line to the back of those houses, or that house. I contend that that is my side line. Apparently, the town felt the same way. They were in, they were there in October, I believe it was. I've got some recreational vehicles in the backyard, and they were sitting there thirty feet from my rear lot line, which is the same one that backs up to Summer Glen Drive, ten feet from this questionable line, and...
Excuse me. Can we refer to that? Let's refer to that one as the short one, and the other one as the long one?
Okay.
Okay, if you don't mind. So, that's from the short line?
Thirty feet from the short line, and I'm ten feet from the long line with the trailers, and they seem to be fine. And that's what has been assumed for forty-two years I've lived there. It's always been my side line.
Did you get a permit for those? When they, or did you just...
Well, I, I don't think I had to have a permit for the trailers. They're in accordance with the, with the code. I'm sure that Andy can attest to that. I did it in accordance with his directions.
Okay. So, then how did this come to be determined by the town as a side lot line or by the building department?
Well, the town decided that it's a rear line. I don't know.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for you. When, you've been here one other time for two sheds that you wanted to put on your land, correct?
I wanted to build a separate...
Separate shed, right.
Separate garage.
Okay.
Which would have been a second garage, and the board turned me down. I understand, you're not supposed to have only one. So, now I decided that I'd like to just enlarge my existing garage.
But, but at that time, when you came in, I remember this, the long line was considered your side yard. Am I correct?
I believe that's true.
And the short line was considered your backyard?
That's right.
Okay. Now, you went and put these trailers on, right? And you, you called down here, and an inspector went out there, right?
Yeah, I...
I mean, whatever inspector it was, right?
Somebody called, I didn't call them. Somebody came out, they checked it all out, and said it was fine.
Okay. So, at that time, then, they determined that the short line was your backyard, right?
Absolutely true.
And they said it had to be, the trailers had to be thirty foot off of there, am I correct?
That's correct.
And they determined the long line is your side yard?
Yes.
And it had to be ten foot off of that?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, now, your application you have in now, you're asking for an attachment to your garage.
Yes.
Right? And it, and it deals with what we'll call the long line, and your, your application is eleven foot off of the long line, correct?
Well, I think it's ten feet.
Oh, okay. But you're within code?
Yes.
Okay. So, you still consider that, we considered it, when I say we, our inspectors considered that long line your side yard twice.
I would say that's true.
Okay. And this time, they now decided it's your backyard line?
Yes.
Okay. And so, what you're inquiring is, why did we make two determinations of a side yard and a backyard, and now, all of a sudden, our inspectors are declaring that you have two backyards? Is this correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That, I just wanted to clear it all up.
Right. What I might want to add, that's kind of beside the point, because one...
Well, no, because...
One of them is clearly not correct, and that doesn't mean that the first interpretation was correct and the second wasn't. That's what he's asking us to do.
How about the third?
How about the third?
Well, the first two, they decided, like I said, they decided that this was the side yard line. Okay?
Right. But they're asking...
Okay, well, now, all of a sudden, they're saying two backyards, Mike. That's my point.
But you're gonna have two backyards or two side... Look, there's not, there's four, there's four lines here.
There's five sides, right?
Yeah, five. Sorry. Two, three. Yeah, five sides. So, you're gonna have, one of them is not gonna be a straight line.
Okay.
So, all right. So, are we done? I mean, are you, anybody else want to ask questions?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, there's not a whole lot of questions. You're looking at a map, and you're saying to one side of the driveway would be your side yard, because if the front is on the corner of the bend in the road, you have front, and you have two sides typically. At least, that's the way I would see it.
Yep.
Which I can see that while you'd have interpretation that says one of, you know, both of those could be considered the backyard as well.
Right.
Just because of the very unique shape of the slot.
My only feeling on the thing is, if you look at, and I think you actually mentioned this, if you look at the two Wayland, the line we're talking about in question really has two adjoining properties mainly. Those are both on Wayland Road, and their backyards adjoin this line. The little line, what we call the little line, is the backyard of one property that's on, is it Summer Glen?
Yes.
Yes.
And the other three backyards that a house is next to?
And the other two lines basically divide the adjoining properties on each side, at least the shorter line. It looks to me like those are rear lot lines.
So, we were wrong the first two times?
Well...
I'm just asking you, your opinion.
I'm, my opinion, yeah. That's my opinion, just from looking at it. That's my opinion, so...
Well, they are the rear lot lines of the people on Wayland, but that doesn't say that it's my rear lot line.
But it sort of doesn't function, to my mind, as, as a side lot line. It sort of divides you and your neighbor to the, to the, to the west, but it doesn't once it makes that turn.
The only reason there's a turn, and that's because my house is on the radius of the curve, they had to make a break in the line. It's still my side.
So, Joe and I have stated our, does anybody else want to speak?
I think that's, you know, it's a question of, do you have two rear, two rear lot lines or do you have two side set lines? I think for, you know, convenience sake, right now, we're saying it's a side set line because that's where we want, where we want to build an extra-large garage in the back. I guess, you know, when you look at, if we don't consider, I guess, is this lot actually, this lot doesn't actually go to a point in the front either, even with the, you know, it never goes, goes to the center of the road, so I consider the front has to have some kind of, where the driveway is, that is a front, a front edge, because, you know, it never goes to a point, like on a full cul-de-sac or a circle where everything goes, goes to a point.
Right.
So, there has to be some consideration for that's the front, and then from the front, you would have two sides.
Well, it, okay, see this, see this, the one on the left side of the house?
Correct.
That line?
Yep.
If you took and moved it over two foot and hit the other point, that would be a continuous line. So, because there was two foot, I mean, they just built it that way, that makes it two back yards?
No, if you follow what I'm saying...
I follow exactly what you're saying.
First of all, it's in a, it's in a general direction of the side lot, the lot between the two houses, and secondly, that back portion of the, the neighbor's adjoining property is a side yard to the property behind it. You don't see that?
I, I know what you're saying, Mike, but I'm saying, if you move that line, that point right here, okay, you move that over two foot, it would be, then you would just have four sides, actually, three sides, two sides and a back, because that would be a continuous line even though it curves. My lot line on Creek Street actually does a curve.
But that's almost, I don't know what the, you'd be better at figuring out the angles, but that's not, what we're talking about is close to a ninety-degree angle, a ninety-degree bend in the opposite direction, not opposite, but to the right.
Can you really use those lines, though, as, you know, measuring a ninety-degree angle? Because it, wouldn't it be less pronounced than that?
Well, this is less, it's less than a ninety even now. But that's all right. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just saying to you that this gentleman has come in here twice, twice our board, okay, our inspectors have determined...
Not our board, Joe.
No, not the board. I apologize for the wording. Our inspectors have said he has one backyard, okay, and side yards. Now, he comes in for technically the third time, not in here, but called our inspectors for the third time, and now they've changed it, and I can't see why we just, I, I mean, I, I believe he was unfairly treated this time. I mean, why not just keep the lot lines?
Wait a minute.
Well, I'm just, Mike, I have an opinion. You got one, you can have it too.
But that's a...
My opinion is that he came, he called, he came in here for variance, he called the inspectors for the trailers, okay? He came in here again, or he came into our, our office to get another permit to build a building, that if it was the same as when he talked to him the first two times, he would not needed a variance for his new garage. Am I correct?
But you're basing, you're basing what you're saying on what somebody else's interpretation was. Two times one way...
Somebody else who?
Staff.
Yeah, twice.
Which is why he's asking us for our interpretation.
Right.
Which makes what the staff did irrelevant to what we're doing. Totally irrelevant.
No. I mean, how does it, did, do you go out and determine things, Mike?
What do you, what's, Joe, that's totally irrelevant to what...
The staff make two separate decisions, Mike.
All right, I'm not gonna...
Am I correct?
I got your point. You understand my position?
Yes, I do.
Okay. This is my lead. I'm gonna make a motion to say that this is a rear setback that he's requiring. Second?
Okay. Now, may I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I make a motion that he has one rear lot line where he put the thirty-foot trailers off of to be continuous with the first two times our inspectors went out. There's second to that.
What's the motion?
To make a motion that he has one rear lot line.
No. The motion is, the long line he's talking about is either a rear lot line or a side lot line.
Okay. Then I'll put it the other way. Okay? I make a motion that the long line is a side yard, okay, not a rear yard.
The long line being the northern line.
Right. That one.
All right, second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1564.48] Aye.
Not in favor?
Aye.
Nigh. No action?
So you now have two rear lot lines. Okay, now you can go into why...
The next one.
...the new garage.
Yeah.
Yep.
I want counsel's opinion. Where are we, Peter?
If there's a failure to get a majoring vote, seven?
With three, then it's a denial, so you proceed to the variance consideration.
Okay. So we're on to the variance application.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, so I guess we're looking for a variance for a greater setback than what is allowed. And I've got the thing up against the house, obviously, it's part of the garage, it's behind evergreen trees, nobody will really see it except for my immediate neighbor.
Do you have a drawing of this?
There's something in, I submitted.
And the last, yeah.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either.
I've got one.
Andres, did you have this?
I don't recall a drawing, no. There was a survey, or there was a site map.
Oh, we got one coming.
But there was actually no drawing of where the garage was going to be.
Yeah. Can you indicate, here's what we have. Is this part of the, is this permanent? Can you draw on this?
It's a copy.
It's a copy. Can you just in general show us where this is going and how it's going to line up with the existing?
Can I see the other one?
This is, this would be the, this, yeah.
Sorry, it's just...
It's a breezeway or it's a, it'll be a solid, not a...
Existing garage, yes, just comes off of here. Okay. And he kept it 10 foot off of this line.
Yep.
Now...
I get it, yep, 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 yep. I actually don't have a problem with the addition.
Or something?
So, existing garage.
And it's attached to the existing garage.
Yep.
What was this, what's this?
Oh, here, it's like this.
I'll draw it a little bit off there, you can. In other words, I think it's here.
This piece, okay, yep, that's what I was...
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of that map?
Nope. Well, I have a copy of it, but I don't have the drawing.
All right, so indicate where it's going to be, and then we'll pass that along.
Okay, the garage would be here.
And that's drawn in sort of an outline for it.
It would be parallel with that other rear line that I now have.
Okay.
It's here.
Yep.
For some reason.
And how far from that line?
10 feet.
10 feet from the line?
I'm 10, that's what I, I didn't apply for a variance because I felt that I complied with the code. I'm 10 feet off the line. Now, all of a sudden, okay, it's a rear. So now that you call that a rear, what does that do to my recreational vehicle?
What do you intend to do with your recreational vehicles?
Well, they're in accordance with the code. I got the recommendations from Andy's group and him personally, but that's the way they're fine, the way they are.
Well, I guess this question is, if we approve that garage, will you remove those trailers?
I use the trailers to haul vehicles, so I can move them, yes, but I don't really want to remove them completely, or I might, to be honest with you, I probably would get rid of two of them, but I want to maintain one for, to haul vehicles.
But not to store them? Are you using them now for storage?
Right now, I keep, I move them, but I also store cars in them. That's right.
And by granting the variance for the garage, you would be moving those vehicles into the garage?
I wouldn't need the storage space, though. I'd have it in the garage, that's right. I would just, like I said, I'd keep one to move vehicles and go to sale or pick something up or whatever.
So I guess my point would be, if we okay this, you'll get rid of two of them, keep one, and keep it in accordance with our code in Penfield, whatever that may be.
Yes, I can do that. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah. Seems you should be able to get one in there regardless of whether it's 30 feet or 10 feet.
Well, interestingly, when you make that a rear line, and you take 30 feet off 51 feet, and then I give my southern neighbor his 10 feet, I've only got 10 feet, which seems like it renders my lot, some of it useless, and I, maybe I can get a rebate on the taxes.
Maybe. You know? You know, maybe you got too much on the lot.
Maybe I can what?
Maybe you have too much on the lot.
Maybe, I don't know.
Maybe.
But it is a half an acre, so a little over, so...
So let's go back to the garage. What do you, why do you need that garage, and what are you going to use it for?
Well, I have, I have a collection of collector's special interest automobiles that I keep in there, that I like to keep on the premises.
Okay.
It's just inconvenient if I have to store them off-site or anything, so it'd be nice to be able to have them in my own facility.
And you don't have room in your existing three-car garage?
No, I don't.
How many vehicles do you have that you're going to put in there?
I actually, I actually own eight vehicles. This would take care, between this garage and that garage, I'd be able to store them.
All eight?
All of them. That's the idea.
And then keep one of the containers to move, move them when you need to.
And I could, yes, then I can have one to utilize for moving or whatever.
What kind of materials is the garage going to be?
Well, it's going to be built to match the house.
Same color?
Woodings, wooden siding, shingled roof, or vinyl siding, I should say, and a shingled roof to match the existing house.
Going to be any additional lighting that you'll be adding?
Only inside, I'd have lights inside.
No exterior light? No exterior lighting?
No exterior lighting.
And I think you indicated there's going to be a garage door?
There would be a garage door in the end of it, yes.
Obviously big enough to get a car in and out of?
Sure.
Okay. And then, are you going to put any additional pavement, stone, anything leading to that?
If I did anything, I might, on this north side, I might, well, I don't have to do much, it's not, it's not an everyday drive. I might have to build it up a little bit because it soaks a little here, I may have to build that up a little bit to make it solid, but I don't tend to pave it. I'm not going to pave it, I'm going to try to maintain all along I can.
And how are you currently getting cars in and out of your back portion, through the right side of your property?
Well, I can go, I can go either way. I tend to go the right-hand side because it's wider, it's a little easier to go that way. I can come this way, it's a little tighter. But that was what I thought, I would utilize the left side if I can get the garage there. I'll fix that up enough so I can use that, I won't even use the south side of the house.
And the cars you're going to store there are all registered to you?
Are they what?
Are they all owned by you?
Yes.
Registered to you? So you would agree you all need to keep your vintage cars in there?
That's all I'm keeping there.
All right, and you're not going to use this for commercial?
Absolutely not.
And you'll comply with a agreed requirement for, to that effect?
Sure, sure, it's strictly a storage.
The height of the garage going to match, the extension going to match the existing height of the garage?
I think that the height on a garage would probably be, probably be 10 feet, roughly 10 feet.
Okay.
Which is much different, I guess, than a house, I don't know what a house is.
But compared to what you have now, it'll be about the same height? Still not sure I understand.
The guy, I was hoping that I might be slightly higher.
Okay.
Not much, a little bit higher. I don't know what the rules are on height, but whatever the code says.
You'll comply with it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Could you show me what he pointed out to you?
Can you take that off, though, so we can circulate that?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to see.
Went two-two, of course.
We can't really see it from where we are.
I might ask you to ask Dan what his opinion is on that first issue.
Well, I don't know how we can have a revote. But we can talk about it, you want to do...
Probably can't.
I think I'd like to adjourn and do an executive session.
Sure, I'd love it.
No, hey, that's fine. So, good evening, folks, by the way, pardon my lateness, but we are going to take a brief recess to have an executive session to discuss a legal issue with counsel, right?
Right.
Well, I have a motion to go into executive session for that reason.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Want a conference room, Pete?
Okay, folks, we are now out of executive session, and we're ready to continue with this application. Before we do that, however, I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, the vote on the interpretation issue will stand two to two, and we will continue with the variance application, but I'm going to ask, we, the board, are going to ask Andy Sevagis to clarify some things for us on the record, so go ahead, Andy.
Okay. First thing I wanted to clarify is that the setback requirements for the trailers or any recreational vehicles is 10 feet to the side and/or rear property line. So regardless of whether it's determined the property line is a side or a rear, the 10-foot setback always applies. Secondly, the question about the minimum required setback for the garage addition is not really related, in my opinion, to whether we're talking about a side or a rear property line. It's a requirement in the code that the primary structure, which includes the house and attached garage, are required to be setback 30 feet from any property line, and that's, that's in a, measured in a 90-degree angle to the rear of the structure. So it's not, again, it's not a question of whether it's a side or a rear property line, it's how far the structure has to be from the property line.
And why does that apply as opposed to like a 10-foot or a, because the structure's angled, right?
Right, it's because, because there's an angle to the principal structure, we have to determine the 30-foot setback, how that applies, or if that applies.
Okay. I have to say, folks, that I've been doing this for over 20 years. Mike, you're probably close to the same, if not, and first time this has ever come up, so we appreciate your patience. We're obviously trying to do the right thing, most importantly, by being fair to everybody involved, the applicant, neighbors, all citizens here, so we appreciate your patience and your time, and please, resume.
Okay. Where were we? I know, I think we were...
I think people were asking questions.
Yeah, we're just about, yeah. I thought we were finished with your presentation, but...
Okay.
Anybody else have an opportunity, have other questions?
So I'm just curious, the, this enlargement would be an addition of 22 by 36? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I watched last year's recording of this, and you were actually talking about a smaller shed, 20 by 30?
If, when I was trying to do a freestanding garage...
Uh huh.
Yes, I was.
And in fact, you even said you could go down like to 20 squared or 22-foot squared?
I was thinking I would do that if I couldn't do anything else, but now that I'm enlarging my own, my existing garage, I would like to do it 22 by 36.
Okay. And could I have some clarification, Andy? Is there any limit, any parameters on the size of, on detached garage?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I got a couple, Mike. Now, your garage is going towards the long lot line, as we called it before, right? So now, we've determined that you need a 30-foot. Those houses on that line, how far away from, I think you stated they're 150-foot away from that lot line, correct?
Yes, the one house is probably, probably 150 feet to the back of the house from my, from that line.
This way, David.
The other, the house next to that, the original farmhouse, there's a barn and a dog run that's back closer, but the house is there again, that's 150 feet, that's an inch.
Okay, and just to make a note, there's all kinds of shrubbery back there, too, right? What is that, trees?
Everything around, right around the back of my home in this area is all trees, pine trees and so on, and there's pine trees in this area. It's a little bit of open spot here, but it's got like grass plants and so on, but it's all blocked off. Nobody would even see that building except the neighbor over here, who's certainly receptive to the whole thing. And these people, I talked to the people in this house, he has no problem, as long as I'm building on my property, he doesn't care. Nobody else is going to see it, it's so far away. The neighbor to the south can't see it, can't see through my fence here and so on, he's never even going to see it, and behind me, they have binoculars, and there's, and there's all kinds of trees. In fact, the neighbor behind me planted trees to block off the area after saying the last time she liked to have it open, so anyway, it's blocked off.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to be removing any trees or shrubs to put this garage in? Existing trees and shrubs?
I don't think so. I don't think I have to.
Okay.
I know you said there was no commercial use for the garage. You don't trade parts or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay. All I have.
Okay. Audience, anyone in the audience care to speak about this variance application?
Sabrina Renner, 15 Summer Glen Drive. My property backs up to the, I think what we're calling the short backyard, the short back property line.
Okay.
In the summertime, it's well screened by trees on my neighbor to the south and our property. In the wintertime, it's wide open. We certainly wouldn't need binoculars to see another building back there. I would also like to state that the trailers that are currently there are, have never been moved. They're not for, they're not for hauling, they're simply for storage.
They have wheels?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I also would ask the board to consider what is too much, I mean, we're getting, this is eight cars on a residential property. That seems a bit excessive, and if this project were to be approved, we would ask that what goes, that the restrictions on it simply being storage and nothing else go with the deed to the property so that future owners can't decide to have whatever they want, a rock band back there or what have you, or an auto shop or something like that.
Well, can I ask you a question? So are you for the thing, so we build the garage and get rid of two trailer, or are you against that? I'm confused.
The trailers seem to be working just fine, what he has now, and I don't see a need for a garage for the extra storage. I don't, personally don't think that there's a need for that many cars on a property.
She's on the short lot.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the witness?
She's on this.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience care to speak, come on up, ma'am.
Should I ask her? She's here? I think she's on the short lot line. She's in here.
Could you, excuse me, could you come up and show us on this map again?
Yeah, we're a little confused as to where... There's shorts and longs and...
It could be one of two, so, no, if you would just point it out to everybody. Barry, can you see? Right here.
Sort of diagonal.
That's what I thought, diagonal, not this one, because this is open to the...
Come down here and show us, too.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Take it. Sorry, just...
Okay. Is it 15?
So this is the short?
Yeah.
So you're, you're, this house here?
15.
So you're not even bordering, right?
Very small.
Straight hold, oh, I see, two foot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Phyllis Sullivan, and I live at 21 Summer Glen Drive. The property backs to Mr. Andrews, and I have been before the board about two years ago when he applied for another garage. I still have concerns about the request regarding another garage. The property values in Village Green East are maintained. They're larger than the properties that are, larger acreage than the properties that are currently being built in the town of Penfield, and it's a quiet, mature neighborhood. It's well-maintained, there's never been any problems, as I know, and I don't feel that the folks that live there, or folks that might want to buy into that neighborhood, into my neighborhood, want to look at cars in the backyard, in the driveways, wherever. There's green space, and this is what people are looking for, and this is what is appreciated in this day and age. If and when this property is sold, I want to know how another owner would use this garage that he wants. The last time, it was a request for 20 feet by 40 feet, and this was kind of outlawed against, against him, and then he decreased the number, the size, to 20 by 30, and that was denied. And now, there are three trailers back there, which are unsightly, but I've learned to live with them, and I must apologize, I didn't hear all that was going on because I do have a hearing problem, but I did get the word shrubbery. The shrubbery is back there. He has plants that goes along most of the back of the, of his lot line. I have two fir trees and a couple of other trees there, so I don't have that much, I can't see that too much. I also have a little leaf linden that's growing back there. However, in the fall, these things die back, including the trees, except for the fir trees that I had planted a few years ago. So there's a complete line of vision, and I don't know what this is going to be used for. As I could gather this evening, it wants to be a four-car garage, and are you going to do restoration of cars? You going to paint cars? You going to store cars for other people? I, and then, will the next step be additional driveways back there? And as I indicated before, I don't think the older cars have the quality of smoke and exhaust control that they do nowadays. And as I indicated before, I don't think the, the older cars have the quality of smoke and exhaust control that they do nowadays. And if you have eight cars around in a neighborhood, there's going to make some sort of difference in the air quality. I believe that, um, if this is approved, it would set a precedent for the town of Penfield, for others to request similar structures in this town. And I can't see it, I don't understand it. And I gathered that also a trailer would be back there. I don't know how you feel about this, but I certainly do not approve of something like this going on in my neighborhood and in the town of Penfield for someone's hobby. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
You all set?
No, I have some.
No, thank you very much. There are no questions.
Hello?
Hello. Steve Chamberlain, 321 Valley Green Drive. I look, I live directly on the right-hand side of Mr. Andrews. Can I ask a general question of you five up there? How many of you board members have physically been out to the property in the last couple of weeks? Would you raise your hand? Okay. I too, I would agree partially with Mr. Andrews that I won't see it for six months, because I have bushes all along. But when the bushes die for the wintertime, I have a direct view. I think if he wants to build his garage, fine, but take those three trailers out of the back, they're eyesores. If he's gonna store his cars in there, those trailers haven't moved from the day he's had them there. So I don't, you know, the question is, okay, he leaves one, where's he gonna put it? My side, the other guy's side? I don't know. So, uh, the question is, the lady asked before, would you approve of the garage? I think it'll be fine, but I want the three trailers out of there. Eight cars on one lot, 11 cars on one lot is too much for a half acre in a tra- in a, in a tract house in Penfield. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Chamberlain? No? Okay. Anyone else in the audience care to speak on this application? Okay. Would you just mind coming up again, Mr. Andrews, just really quickly? I just want you to run through again, I, I probably missed it, I've seen your written application. But what you will use it for and what you, perhaps more importantly, what you will not use it for. Just, just run that through briefly.
Strictly a storage for the automobiles.
Okay, now, for, for automobiles...
Nobody's gonna see these automobiles, they're in the garage.
And owned by you.
And they're owned by me.
You're not gonna lease space to anybody, you're not gonna do any repairs of other people's vehicles or anything along those lines.
Strictly storage for my vehicles.
And as you're committed to that tonight, I imagine you wouldn't object to that language, if this were to be approved, to those restrictions going in the variance itself?
As far as utilizing the u- use of the building, yeah.
What you just said, you wouldn't...
I don't have a problem with that, no.
Okay.
No, I, I do, I do kinda refute some of what some of my neighbors are saying.
No, understood.
Because it's, the stuff is out of sight and...
Right.
It's in the building, it's not gonna be out. And the trailers are there in accordance with the code. Uh, I'm, yes, I don't mind, I'm, if I had room to put the car in, I have two reasons I have the trailer. Store and to haul. Yes, I have not hauled them yet, although I had plans on doing that. But anyway, uh, it's, everything's out of sight. It's in, it's gonna be in the building. I won't need as many trailers. I may have one that I use to transport, but I can certainly eliminate a couple of them, that's not a problem.
Okay. All right, thanks for reiterating that.
I have a question.
Of Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Okay.
And it relates to something that was said before. How do we know when, if the, if we allow this to be constructed, you have a specific use for it? How are we gonna know that when you sell this property, somebody else isn't gonna use it for something other than storage of vehicles?
Well, they have to, they'll have to comply with the code of the town of Penfield, you can't just, you can't run a hotel or anything else there. You have, you have to comply with the rules.
Well, it's a little different than if you don't have the space available. It would be a lot harder to use it than if it's there, so...
Well, I mean, we're...
We're getting back to, would you have an objection to some type of restriction to be recorded, to that effect? That it can be used for storage of vehicles?
I think he just said no.
If, if this board grants a variance, it's a written document, it would have language in it, they're typically not recorded, I don't think, are they? But you wouldn't have any objection to that being recorded in the clerk's office? It's not the same as a deed, but it is something that would be recorded under this property that, uh, in theory, the whole world, it's, the whole world can see, so, and it'll...
A potential buyer or...
Oh, sure, it'll come up on a, on a title, so...
I don't have a problem with that.
I didn't think you would.
Not at all.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay, thank you all very much.
Ashley Fiondek Youngman and Steven Youngman, 20 Kings Mill Court, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request an area variance to allow a deck with less setback than permitted under section 250 dash 5.1 dash F1 of the code at 20 Kings Mill Court. The property is owned by Ashley Fiondek Youngman and Steven Youngman, and is zoned R dash 1 dash 20, SBL number 094.18 dash 1 dash 53, application number 18Z dash 0045.
Hello?
Hello, good evening. I'm Ashley Fiondek Youngman, I live at 20 Kings Mill Court with my husband, Steve Youngman, and our two young children. Uh, we are here seeking approval for a minor two-foot, four-inch variation to the setback of our property for our deck. Uh, we reside in a suburban neighborhood on a corner lot, kinda goofy corner lot. Very recently, we put in an above-ground pool to help accommodate our son, um, who was diagnosed with a, a non-life-threatening disease that results in many physical restrictions. Um, and the pool helps in the healing and the growth and, and just the development of his mobility over the next eight to 10 years. Um, and he'll be in and out of a wheelchair with varying surgeries as the disease progresses and then leaves. Um, and so, for ease of access to the pool, as well as ease of access in and out of our home and to our yard, we built the deck. The additions of the pool and the deck are consistent with the general aesthetics of our neighborhood. They're an enhancement to the property and the overall neighborhood. We have signatures from all of our neighbors that would be in any way affected by, um, by the deck. Uh, and it, it just states their approval. And then, just if you could finally consider that our, our neighborhood is under incentive zoning and that, due to the size and the shape of our specific lot, there, there really isn't another feasible design to, to have options for where our deck would be. So, just again, we're just requesting a two-foot, four-inch variation. Thank you.
Who, who filled out this application?
Me.
Uh, some of the neatest handwriting I've ever seen.
I was gonna say the same thing, yeah.
I'm an educator.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
And thank you.
My knuckle's still smart from when the nuns hit me when I was, I'm sure that doesn't happen, well...
No.
Okay, would you just elaborate a little bit about the incentive zoning, uh, you know, we, we know what it is, but just for everybody else...
Sure, it is, my understanding that it's a Ryan Holmes development and, um, without being crass, I guess, we might know that Ryan Holmes tends to put a lot of homes in, uh, in a space. So, to do that here, uh, we are on a bend, and the lot is smaller than might typically be in the rest of the neighborhoods in Penfield that are already established.
So the, the amount of yard, so to speak, with which you have to work is, is smaller than...
Minimal, and oddly shaped.
Okay, and you did get into it a little bit about, um, why it doesn't make sense to put in another location that would be in compliance?
It would be our front yard.
Right.
If we went anywhere else.
Okay, uh, and you don't see any issues, do you, with any drainage problems?
No.
Or aesthetics, and then they had other decks in the neighborhood, I imagine?
Yeah, it's actually the same builder as other decks in the neighborhood.
Okay, all right, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when I, when I came out, I'm sorry I didn't meet you at the time, I met your husband. Uh, he explained to me about the deck, and it's the deck itself, the pool's fine.
Right.
And the deck actually comes off the pool towards the house in the backyard. And that you made the stairway a little bit wider because of a wheelchair of someone in your family, am I correct?
Yes.
And that's about exactly what it is, it's like a board and a half.
Mm-hmm.
You added on in order to get a wheelchair up to the ramp and near house, or to the pool area.
Mm-hmm.
So you added a board and a half, and this is what we're talking about, right?
Yes, sir.
So in other words, it's not gonna change the view of it. If you cut that board and a half off, you'd still have the railing there, except that it would be a foot and a half difference.
Right, exactly.
I, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
That's a good point, though, good. Anyone else on the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joseph Inzina, 44 Greening Court, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request an area variance to allow a front porch with less front setback than permitted under section 250 dash 5.1 dash F1 of the code at 44 Greening Court. The property is owned by Joseph and Lynn Inzina, and is zoned R dash 1 dash 20, SBL number 108.15 dash 1 dash 12, application number 18Z dash 0044.
Hi, my name's Joseph Inzina, I live at 44 Greening Court. Um, wanna put a front porch on the deck. Got a timeline that I wrote up. Uh, wife and I decided to build a front porch on our house, because we were tired of sitting on the driveway when we were outside. Went down to the town hall, applied for a permit, filled out the application, brought it back with my property map and building site plans. Um, at that time, I had set up the site inspection, the inspector came over, looked at the property and building site, approved the construction. I returned back to the town hall, paid my $60 for my permit. Then I ordered my lumber, removed two rows of siding off of my house, dug three 44-inch deep post holes, mounted my faceboard to the house. And at this time, I called for my post hole inspection. The inspector came down, stated that the post holes are deep enough and the site looks good, but we have a problem with the setback from the street, which needs to be 50 foot. She gave me the proper paperwork to fill out, and said it would cost another $70 to apply for a variance adjustment. She also stated that because it was of her oversight, she could probably waive the fee. So I filled out the paperwork and returned it that day and submitted it. And I've got photos of the, the decking, and I've got, uh, signatures of all my neighbors that live around me that said that they don't have a problem with it. And that's it.
Could you, uh, do, do us a favor and hand that in?
Sure.
Yeah, to our secretary, please. We'll make that part of the record.
And I just got the photos, I don't know if you can see them up on the board?
Sure, you can, we'll take a look at them and then we'll keep them. Um, I, when I went out there, you did have the basin, right?
Correct.
You had the four post holes and you had the side decking, not the boards on top, but just the basic...
That's correct.
Foot of the porch.
Right, I had it framed.
Okay, so I, I mean, that made a very visual of where it's gonna be. Are you just gonna have a little railing around it?
Uh, originally, I decided, I, I wasn't gonna put a railing on it, but because I have two elderly parents and I have grandkids that are little, I decided I'm probably gonna go with a railing just for their security purposes.
Yeah, a little wooden railing or a wrought iron railing, or, do you, do you know now, I mean, not that it makes a difference?
Yeah, I, it's not gonna be wood, it's gonna be, uh, it's, it's gonna be a smaller railing, just, I, I really haven't picked it out yet, because this is something new that developed, and after talking to you, I thought it was a pretty good idea to do that.
Yeah, maybe this is a good idea. Can you give that to them, let them put it up on the board the audience can see? You can put the one where your base is up right now, up on the board, and the camera probably can pick it up.
Okay.
Um, in your area, are there other front porches that facing the street, rather than just stoops?
Yes, there are. There are a couple of different porches in the area.
Okay, that project out similar to what you're gonna do?
Um, both of the porches that are on our cul-de-sac don't exceed past the structure. Where my porch is going to go up to my existing sidewalk.
Okay, so it protrudes a little bit out in front of your actual house?
Yeah, I decided to go seven foot out, because that's how far the edge of my sidewalk is to my house.
So that the sidewalk meets the porch and you just come right up, it's already there?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I, that's about all I have, it's a basic porch.
Anything else from the board? Hey, Andy, can you just give us like a 30-second, um, uh, comment, if you will, on the right-of-way versus, uh, street? I know everybody, um, thinks that they own the land all the way to the street, but why don't you finish that thought?
Yep, like...
Typically.
Like, like everybody else, I, I thought the same thing until I, until I started working here. Um, the, the right-of-way actually extends beyond the edge of the road, typically 18 feet past the road gutter.
Wow.
Um, so, so technically, you don't own 18 feet of what you perceive to be your, your front lawn or front yard.
Yeah.
Um, and that was really one of the issues here. Yeah, so it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's a, if, if you pull your survey out, folks, and you take a look at it, you'll likely see a line that says right-of-way, Town of Penfield, or whatever municipality it is. And that's actually, although it's your yard and you cut the grass and water it and do whatever else you do to your grass, uh, it's, it's not, not legally owned by you.
Right.
So, okay.
It's a learning experience.
Yeah, all right, anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Oops.
Katie, Katie Ostrowski?
Yes.
Those, yeah.
Why don't you take the other one down too, if you would? Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Katie Ostrowski?
Bring it over here.
1305 Mill Creek Run, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a conditional use permit under section 250 dash 13.3 and section 250 dash 5.5 dash C1 of the code to allow a doggy, a dog daycare business at 2217 Penfield Road. The property is owned by Parker John Properties LLC and is owned business, non-retail. SBL number 140.01 dash 2 dash 9, application number 18Z dash 0039.
Hi, I'm Katie Ostrowski. I live at 1305 Mill Creek Run in Webster. I am the owner of Spoiled Rotten Doggy Day Spa. I was here a year and a half ago, got permission to do the daycare, or the, the dog grooming, and now I'm looking to expand, um, to include a doggy daycare. Um, we moved from Fairport to Penfield, March of 2017. When we moved, most of our clients stayed with us. It took a while to get, um, some of the Penfield dogs to know we were there. Now, we're super busy. Um, we're booking out about three weeks. The phone hasn't stopped ringing, it's really, really good. We love being in Penfield. But as good as business is right now, there's just a little issue that we have. Um, there's a lot of people that have full-time jobs, work nine to five, Monday through Friday. They wanna get their dogs groomed, but we can't accommodate it. They can't leave their dog there all day, and we just don't have the space. Um, you know, they wanna come and pick up during lunch, their lunch hour, or at the end of their day. Uh, we just can't do that, so, um, we've had to turn many clients away. Uh, if we open up the daycare, we'd be able to provide a service that is currently not available, um, in the immediate area. The doggy daycare would be located around the back of the building, right next to the barber shop. We'd have a fenced-in area with only one way in and out for the dogs. They wouldn't be able to go out into the grass or anybody else's yard or the street. It would be secure, so that they would come in and out through the, the daycare. It would be as secure as the grooming shop is. We would have two gates, um, that would keep the dogs contained until they, so they don't run out the front door. And if permitted to run the doggy daycare, we would probably be able to add four, three, four new jobs to, to Penfield. Operation hours, Monday through Friday, probably be eight to six o'clock at night, no weekends, no evenings. So that's, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah.
I was going to ask about a fence.
Yeah.
Because I noticed there wasn't anything back there.
Yeah.
Um, can you speak about what, how big an area that would be?
Nick Ostrowski, um, we're thinking around 30 by 30, maybe a little bit larger. Um, I did speak with someone in the zoning building department, and I believe, uh, we're good to put in pretty... I did speak with someone in the zoning building department, and I believe we're good to put in pretty much whatever we want. Six-foot-high stockade is what we would go with, just because it would limit visibility and any reason for a dog to get agitated or bark any more than I would want to hear.
Okay. So that was my next question was, you know, how do you control for noise because you have residents
Right.
Right in back of you?
Yeah, well, we would let them out to play a little bit or use the restroom. They wouldn't be out there all the time. We have the space inside to keep them contained, to keep the noise level inside. We wouldn't have windows open because that, again, isn't secure. So they wouldn't be out there all day or unsupervised. They would always be supervised, there'd always be somebody there with them.
And how many dogs are we talking about that would be able to be there during the day?
During the day? The daycare, I'd probably say six to seven.
Okay, I guess I'm curious how they're all going to fit, because I saw the shed, not the shed, excuse me. I saw the addition.
There's also another room inside there also.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah.
Didn't see that.
Yeah.
Okay, would six to seven dogs be out together?
I mean, they would be there together. We would go through interviews to see if they're, I mean, we know our clients. We know if we have good dogs or bad dogs. We have little client cards that we write down if they're good with other dogs, if they're aggressive. We wouldn't take those kind of dogs in. We would, they would always be supervised and they would be able to play together. When they come into the grooming area, we don't kennel them. We let them run around, play a little bit, get their energy out, and then we'll groom them.
Right, but would there be six to seven dogs outside at one time?
It's, I mean, if there's one person watching them, then we would probably want, we wouldn't want, you know, four dogs here, four dogs here. We would want to be able to see all of the dogs, so possibly, yeah, I would say, yeah.
Marie, are you asking whether there's going to be dogs in the play area plus dogs being groomed simultaneously? Is that what?
I guess what I'm wondering is, where I'm trying to go is, if you have seven dogs or six dogs outside at one time, because that's how many you have at a daycare area, that's six to seven dogs making noise.
Right.
Barking at each other. So, again, concerned about the residents in back of you. That's what I wondered if they would all be out at one time.
Yeah, I mean, I've never run a daycare before, so I don't know how it would be. I don't tolerate a lot of noise and I'm very conscious of that, so if it's wild and crazy, they go inside, but they won't be outside.
Can I also add, and the lot to the immediate west is actually vacant.
Right, it's for sale, actually, right?
Yeah, no one's going to buy it, yes, it's for sale. To the south of that, Lisa and Amy, I have spoke with them in regards to it.
Okay.
They actually do have a six-foot stockade fence also on the property line.
Okay.
And all indications from them were that they were for it.
Okay.
Now, to clarify, the grooming area and the daycare are completely separate. The grooming is upstairs, the daycare would have a separate entrance around the back.
Okay.
We would have it secured so if a dog does need to get groomed, we would keep them inside the building and lead them upstairs to the grooming area. But it's two totally separate spaces, so we wouldn't have like 30 dogs running around crazy.
Thank you. And that was all the questions I had.
I just want to get a clarification. Are you doing the daycare just for the people that are being groomed?
No.
Or the dogs that are being groomed, or is that in addition to dogs?
In addition to, yeah, it would just be a perk. We would also be able to, you know, if your dog's being, if your dog is playing in the daycare, if you want to have it bathed before it goes home. So that would, you know, give us more opportunity for groom, more groomers to get in there and bathe their dog, you know.
Okay.
And no overnight stays?
No.
And I think you said 6:00 PM closed, no weekends?
No, nope.
So that's, in a sense, kind of similar to what a residential zone would want?
Yeah, thank you.
Andy, is there a limit on the number of dogs residential homeowner in the town?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Would you be willing, as a condition of approval, to allow this board to dictate that you come back in the event that we have a lot of complaints about noise and then talk about reducing the number of dogs we would allow you to have?
Absolutely, yep.
All right, anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Come on up. Why don't you guys just have a seat in the front row there?
Hi, I'm Kevin Page, 26 Bronson Drive, Fairport, New York, 14450. First off, I do want to say, you know, congratulations on the business and I appreciate entrepreneurship. I appreciate people's opportunities to, you know, create jobs in that, in that area. There are, that, that building is no longer vacant. We moved in about five years ago and we have seen a steady increase of traffic on 441, which we can see from our backyard. We have, you know, Tim Hortons, love Tim Hortons, but we also get the light pollution from their drive-through into our house in the morning and the evening, which is okay, but you know, as this continues and we have summers off, we're also educators, which is, and there are several educators on our street, we're outside a lot and I, I do not look forward to the prospect of having dogs barking at all times. And I know it's not going to be at all times, but there is that prospect of seven, eight dogs being outside, four dogs being outside. We know what dogs do, so I am personally, and I'm opposed to having a dog, a doggy daycare. And with the conflict of knowing that, I do appreciate the entrepreneurship and the spreading of business. So I'm kind of conflicted on here, but as far as my residential area, where I moved in recently with our own kids, and this is our, it's becoming more busy than what we originally thought it would be, and it's, I just would like to kind of limit how many things are going on in our own backyard.
Mr. Page, do you hear the dogs now?
We hear dogs from, no, not from, I don't hear any dogs from there that I know of. I do hear dogs throughout the day, you know.
Because there are a lot of dogs.
Yes, yes.
Right.
But, but, you know, I generally would like that to decrease, not have any possibility of increasing.
Okay, except that anyone can get a dog in your neighborhood?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Would you be more at ease knowing that this board said, okay, at eight months or six months or whatever date we set, you, the applicant comes back to review any issues with noise? Would that put you more at ease with something like this?
Well, I'm, I guess, I mean, if it's going to happen, I would love, I would appreciate that being inserted into the deal. However, I would, I'm kind of conflicted on that as well, because if they were to invest in a fence around the area and then that's their business investment, that's their livelihood, where they put that money forward and now they, if it gets taken away, that's problematic. So just for general present, for myself, I would be opposed to it, starting in the first place respectfully.
How far is your house from where the outside area?
Our house is, so you know the red barn? We live right behind it. So we have, we have a fence around our property and neighbors on each side that have dogs, so.
So you're actually diagonal? You're not directly behind?
Yeah, you can see it from my backyard, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for this witness? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Could you guys come back up for a second?
I'm neighbors.
You'll get a chance, I'm sorry. I just want to ask this before I forget. That's a good point about the cost of the fence and the investment that you would make. Is there, is, have you thought it through so much that you know that there'd be a minimum number of dogs you'd have to have to make it economically worthwhile for you?
Right, and that would be the number.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Would you consider not allowing all the dogs out at once?
Yeah.
And limiting the number of dogs?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, all right, somebody else, oh, I'm sorry.
One comment, just based on the comment about there's already dogs in the neighborhood. It almost would seem like you also, at the same point in time, would have to also quiet the kids down at the same time. We have three kids ourselves. Our three kids make far more noise than our two dogs. Typically, when I go to the building, our three kids are still louder than the dogs when I walk into the shop, so. I mean, I get it, I do like privacy and quiet too, but the children in the neighborhood typically make just the same amount of noise, if not more, than the dogs do, so.
Okay, thanks. Come on up, sir.
Hello, I'm William Maves, I live at 28 Bronson Drive. It's, it's almost immediately, I live almost immediately behind kind of kitty quarter. I feel the same way about, as Kevin does. I'm really happy that there's a business in the area, but I feel the same way about the concerns with the doggy daycare. Just because, I mean, things happen, people run late, it could go later than six oftentimes. I don't know really any other daycare around that just does days, once if someone goes on vacation or anything like that. I mean, I'm just concerned about that, that it might get pushed to more things. So, yeah, I just have a concern living in a residential area. I mean, kids and noise are expected, but they're only expected during certain times. I mean, I mean, it's not unheard of that, you know, people go to work at 6:00 in the morning, could drop your dog off then. I mean, there's just the concern about that.
Mr. Maves, do you hear the dogs now?
I'm not home during the day, so I don't. If they're not on the weekend, I really don't, just because I work 7:30 to 6:00 or whatever, and so no, I don't generally hear them. I do know, though, that just by having dogs in the neighborhood, if one barks at a particular time, then their buddy down the road barks, and then their other buddy barks, and then everyone barks. So it's okay, but, you know, you can go out and get your dog and have your dog come in.
As could, as could
Yeah.
The Ostrowskis, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a noise ordinance, and what time would it go into effect?
I think yes and always, right?
Yeah, it gets a little more restrictive after 11:00 PM.
Okay, so but eight to six, I mean, traffic, the cars right on 441. The fence would actually be located on the west side of the building too, so it would probably almost be fairly visible, visible to the residents behind and to the east.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? All right. Something else?
Just one thing.
Okay, come on up, just so they can catch on the mic.
Kids do make noise, I just wanted, you know, but that's also, that's residential, that's, the residential area is for people. So I'm okay with kids making noise. I'm just, I am concerned that this could expand and create more noise volume for the area. But you guys make your decision and we'll fully, you know, comply and appreciate, and I do appreciate the extra business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're all set, and thank you all, and next application, please.
David P. Stott, Jr., 1665 Penfield Road, LLC, 1665 Penfield Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request an area variance to allow a walk-in cooler addition with less setback than permitted under section 250-5.7-D3 of the code and greater lot coverage than permitted under section 250-5.7-D2 of the code at 1665 Penfield Road. The property is owned by 1665 Penfield Road LLC and is owned general business. SBL number 138.08-1-35, application number 18Z-0041.
Hi, good evening. My name's David Stott and this is Michael Sassom, we're the owners at 1665 Old Penfield Road, better known as the Penfield Poorhouse. And we are indeed seeking a variance to allow us to build an outdoor walk-in cooler, 12 feet by 24 feet, on the southeast side of the building.
Okay, what are you using now for a walk-in cooler? Where is it?
There's an existing one inside the kitchen. And the problem we're having is we've pretty much outgrown what we have at the property. The property itself does not allow us to put this cooler anywhere else on the property, just because of the design of the kitchen itself. And this is what we're looking to get.
Okay, and this is used primarily to store kegs of beer?
This will be, yes, and it's, right now, what we have inside the building is the keg storage and the beer storage inside the building. That whole area is going to be more or less converted for food. We've kind of grown a lot more into a family business. We do a lot of food at the property now, as well as people's tastes have changed with all the different types of craft beers and things. And basically, in order to compete nowadays, you have to have as many different varieties as you can because the taste of people have changed and that's what we're seeking to do.
I guess the thrust of my question was, this has been a restaurant for a while and that walk-in cooler was fine to service that, but because you're expanding the amount and types of beer, you need a bigger cooler than this.
Yeah, I think it's twofold. We need more space for food is really the primary motivator. There just isn't enough space, so by relocating the beer, it frees up space that we can have more food.
What's this walk-in cooler going to look like from the outside?
12 by 24 feet, built onto the southeast side of the building, only accessible from the inside of the kitchen. There's no outside entrance to it. And then what we plan on doing is having the exterior of it match the existing building itself.
Okay, which would be what?
Siding, aluminum, vinyl?
Wood to match the building itself.
So wood surrounding structure?
Yeah. The building as it exists, the, the front of the building is all brick.
Right.
Lower half around, on the back is brick, the upper part is wood, and then the other side is also brick. So it would match the existing side that it would be going on.
Okay, how high would this structure be?
What was it, 10 feet? 10 feet?
10 feet high? Is that, is there going to be a compressor on top?
The compressor?
We're not sure if we're going to put it on top or on the side, because we need access to it for cottonwood buildup and things like that, so it might be on the side of the building instead of on top.
So it may or may not increase the height?
Right, but it's still very much below the height of the building itself.
Okay, and what's the, how far is it going to be from Plaza Circle?
12 feet.
Okay, and it's, you're required to have 80 feet, so you're asking for 68 feet?
Yes. Close to that, that sounds about right.
Okay, what's the, what's the situation with the lot coverage?
The lot coverage, I had, I had Mihan Architecture do the analytics for the lot coverage. And what we have here is the total square foot of the lot is 26,395 feet.
Okay.
The existing green space on that square foot is 6,392, which converts over to 24.22% of green space on the property. By adding this, the 288 square feet of this cooler, we're reducing the green space down to 23.13%. So basically, it's just a little over 1% we're reducing the green space by.
Okay. And that lot coverage was there probably before they had lot coverage requirements?
Yeah, this was approved as a restaurant decades ago before, you know, before any of the existing green space laws.
For the record, could you just describe the surrounding area on that side of the building?
You're talking a larger area?
Yeah, just, you know, like, who's the nearest neighbor? What's to the, yeah, what's to the east?
Yeah, I mean
The south, actually, I guess.
It's hard to get much more commercial than where we are. We're surrounded basically by Panerima Plaza, Home Depot across the street, you have Delta Sonic. So it's really as much commercial as could be. Where the cooler is going, if you were to stand at that juncture and face out, you're looking at the parking lot of the barber shop next door.
And that's across Plaza Circle?
That's correct.
And what's the usage of Plaza Circle primarily?
Just a feeder for Home Depot.
Yeah, okay. So how far are you from the barber shop? It's a hair salon, I guess you would call it.
It's, the parking lot would be directly across from, from us on Plaza Circle.
And there's a parking lot, I think, on the side of that, or at least the driveway?
That's the parking lot.
So there's some space there, right?
I'm sorry?
There's some space between your building and the nearest building
Oh, yes.
To the south?
Yes.
Okay, as well as Home Depot in the back, that's
That's correct.
Home Depot, okay, quite a ways. Okay, that's all I have, man.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Kirk Wright, San and Lighting Services.
Kirk Wright, San and Lighting Services, 530 Route 104, Ontario, New York, 14519. Request a special permit under section 250-10.3 of the code to allow more than one building sign permitted under section 250-10.13-C of the code, and building signage with greater area than permitted under section 250-10.13-B of the code at 1930 Empire Boulevard. Property is owned by Chris Fogarty, 1930 Empire Boulevard Holdings LLC and its own general business, SBL number 093.02-1-19, application number 18Z-0040.
My name's Rob Spagnuelli, I'm here on behalf of the property at 1930 Empire Boulevard. Our business is cellular sales, we're, we are an authorized retailer of Verizon Wireless, so we sell phones, a lot of phones. And I just wanna thank you for letting us into your community. We're looking forward to being in Penfield and being in this location. I think it's gonna be great for us and the surrounding community. So, what we're interested in trying to accomplish is, our business is a little different than most retail businesses are, it's very much a lot of drive-by impulse-type stopping. A lot of traffic on this road, people are gonna know we're here. When you drive the road, the orientation of the building is such that if you're coming from the north, what we really want to accomplish is a sign on all three sides, so that whether you're heading southbound or northbound, you can see there's a Verizon building there. The, the actual permitting allows for 240 maximum square feet, so that would be 120 square foot per sign on two sides, and what we're asking is a third sign of the same. It's a little less than 120 square feet, it would be 117.9, but on three sides. And again, the orientation of the building is of concern. If you're coming from the north, you're coming down, you have Chili's, Valvoline, and then Midas, and you don't really see the front of the building, which is the front-facing, till you get in front of Midas. So, traffic goes about, not from this area, but about 40 miles an hour, I would guess, on that stretch, and so, we would like to have a north-facing sign of equivalent to the other, to the west and to the south, so we can properly broadcast Verizon.
Building is being built as we speak?
It is.
Okay. And would you describe as, let's say, somebody heading south on Empire, which is a kind of a road that's sort of odd direction, but I think, when you and I say south, we're talking about the same thing. Let's say we're coming from Webster, Dunkin' Donuts, headed toward Baytown Plaza.
And you have to forgive me, 'cause I'm not from the area. So, if we're heading south, we're heading towards the residential area, correct? And the building would be on the left?
Talking about heading towards the hill.
The building would be on the left.
Okay.
That you got. Yeah, you're headed toward the big plaza right behind where the building's being built.
So, if you're heading southbound, that's the bit, that's the big concern. The interesting thing about our building is the west and the south-facing are the entrances.
Yeah.
North is not an entrance. So, if you're coming from the north, southbound, there's currently, there's not an allotment for a sign there, unless we go fairly small, it would have to be 80 square feet to accommodate the 240 allowed max. We'd have three signs, 80, 80, 80. And, you know, I drove that today. It would be considered small based on what else is in the area. And when you're coming southbound, there's Chili's, and these are prominently displayed with pylon signs, which we aren't going to have. There's a Chili's, there's a Valvoline, and then the Midas. And when, right about when you get to Midas is when you would see the west-facing front sign. So, that's what, that's, I'd like that to be prominently displayed on the north face, so that it would be equal. Coming the other way, it would be displayed, Taco Bell's pretty close, so you almost don't even see the south-facing signage until you're up on Taco Bell. But from the south, you prominently can see the front, west-facing sign.
All right. Do you know if you're going to be on any of the future Plaza signs? Do you have any, have you talked with the landlord about that at all?
I talked to the superintendent, and he indicated that we are gonna have one of those, you know, group signs.
Yeah.
I don't know how big the panels are. Our typical stores have larger, you know, single proprietary Verizon signs.
And customers are gonna be able to enter your parking lot from the plaza as well?
Yes.
I have to tell you, I'm a little bit, I'm hesitant on this application, because the building's not built yet. And I, we've had a lot of applications and a lot recently for signs in that area, and probably granted most of them, not all of them, and not all to the degree requested. So, I certainly understand you saying, hey, we're going this way, we're going that way, and this is what we want now, but right now, you got steel up, or however progress it made in the last couple of days. There are also traffic lights coming in both directions, so, yeah, 40 miles an hour may be actually a little low for your estimate?
Right.
When all the lights are green, or when you get further away from the plaza. But people are gonna be stopping, and as you move in, and you guys are a good company, everybody knows that, you're one of the leading ones, so I, I think with the traffic lights, and you've actually had a presence in there not all that long ago, a little further south, I guess.
It's a, we, it's not our same group, it is.
Yeah, but it's Verizon, it was Verizon.
Correct.
And that was a real odd-shaped building, like a triangle thing, that we did grant two signs, or one on each side, completely different building. But as I said, with time passing, being able to come in from the plaza, likely having Verizon, there are gonna be two additional, right? There are gonna be two additional big pylon signs for the plaza. I don't know if you're aware of that.
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, 'cause the plaza's, they've been working on that plaza for a long time, it's going really well.
And there are no building signs on the back at the first of the plaza.
From the plaza. I just think there are a lot of factors unknown at this point. I want also to ask you about the color of the building. Do you know what that is going to be?
Yes, it's a, it's like a steel gray. It's called, it's a Sherwin-Williams web gray. It's a steel gray around the band?
Okay.
Where the sign is, and it's a brick facing, a brick at the bottom, like a red brick.
So, is there anything unique about the exterior of the building that would identify it as a Verizon? The colors or anything?
Well, only the web, only the web gray, the sign band, which is proprietary, what we have to use for Verizon. But the bottom is different than all of the other Verizons we're building, and that, I believe, is because of the, you know, agreement with the landlord and the development of that space. There's also, this is a, this is a building that has two businesses, so there's a business that faces the back, so someone from the back at the, in the parking lot would be looking at their sign, not ours. So, from the back, I really don't know that you would know that that's a Verizon.
How about any, do you know if there are gonna be any directional signs, arrows, from the plaza pointing into your parking lot?
That I don't know. I do have renderings. Would that be of any?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it wouldn't hurt. Okay. And you're, you're allowed one building-mounted sign, you're asking for two additional, and then also, Andy, would you mind clarifying the square footage? I wanna?
May I?
Sure.
I apologize, just correct. It's a, we're allowed two, 120 square feet each, totaling 240.
Okay.
You're allowed one, I thought.
Yeah.
You're allowed one sign and then one free-standing.
Wait a minute.
Let's, yeah, Andy.
Yeah, the code allows one, one building sign per business. The size of the size, the size of the sign is determined by the frontage of the building.
Right.
I, in looking at the, the building myself, I determined that there was 100 feet of frontage. Wait a minute.
You got 117 in your notes.
Yeah, it's two square feet of signage for each linear foot frontage.
Yeah, actually, the maximum, I determine the maximum area, allowable area of the sign to be 100 square feet, based on the two square feet of frontage on the west side of the building, which faces.
So, are, are you agreeing with that? You're telling me two signs, he's telling me one.
Yeah, all the documentation I have is stating that the maximum allowable size of an individual sign is two square feet of signage for each linear foot, and the calculation permitted maximal sign area is 120 feet times two, which equals 200. So, maybe, maybe the way this is written, it's 120. I'm confused by.
Linear foot of frontage, not linear foot of the building.
Correct. Linear foot of the front. And I have that.
And we determine the frontage by the, the main primary entrance to the space. That's what we use for.
Is it the actual physical building, or is it the property line at the road?
It's the building, it's the, the linear footage of frontage of the building for the tenant space, not the whole building.
It'd be, it'd basically be the facade facing Empire Boulevard.
Right.
So, however long that is, times two.
But that still doesn't answer. Do we have to, if he wants three signs, are we approving one sign because he gets two? Or are we approving two because he gets one?
He's only allowed one sign per code.
That's what we've always known, but that's not what he's saying. He said he's allowed two, right? So, I guess we're going with him, sorry.
Well, yeah, I mean, the code says what the code says, and it's, and it's pretty, pretty clear, it's one building-mounted sign per business?
Yes.
Right? So, Verizon, if it's gonna be a tenant there, which it's gonna, would be allowed one sign. Then there's a second question of, well, how big, how large can that sign be? That's based on the footage. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the obvious question to me is, you're allowed one building-mounted sign by code, and one free-standing sign, and you called it a pylon sign. A pylon sign in that location would, would accomplish what you're trying to accomplish from cars going north and south on Empire, and, you know, the building's facing west, so that covers three. It seems to me you ought to be able to, to comply with the code without a variance, and I'm asking you why you haven't considered a pylon sign?
I'm not sure why, and we've, the numbers I got came, Andy knows.
Well, I just wanted to add that the board approved a pylon sign on that property as part of the Baytown signage. So, if they wanted to put a free-standing sign up, there would be a second free-standing sign.
On that property.
They'd have to come in for a special permit for a second free-standing sign.
Right. That's one of the reasons I asked a question about whether Verizon's going to be, there is going to be, let's call it a plaza.
Right, a group pylon sign with.
Right by your building.
Right.
And if you guys are gonna be there, that's, it's not the same as having your own pylon, pylon sign, but you're gonna be there on a, I don't know if you've seen the sign a little further north?
I did.
On Daniels Creek, that's a, that's a, that's a nice sign.
But the individual signs are only about, you know, six feet by three.
Sure, sure.
You're talking less than 20.
Verizon has a look.
20 square, well, I'm just talking size.
No, I understand.
And identifiable, ability. You know, you're talking about 20 to 30 square feet versus, you know, our usual signs, the Verizon sign, if we were gonna put a pylon up, the things are like, you know, five by 15, they're huge.
Yeah.
They're like houses up on a pole.
True.
Which I'm sure that's why we couldn't put the pylon up, is that there must have been coordination with the developer to have the multi-sign there.
Yeah. Well, they came in here and they asked permission for that, so there was, and they got in there before you did. Would, do you think that you'd be able to have some answers to these questions if we were to put this off for a month?
We can't put it off for a month. We're selling phones on September 7th.
Okay.
So.
One whole building?
In fact.
So, the, you, your grand opening is, or whatever, you're gonna be open for business?
The soft opening is September 7th, grand opening will come about a month after that, or?
Okay.
Something like that.
All right. So, you, there's, you won't be able to know before September 7th whether your company's gonna be on that pylon sign?
No, I know we're, I'm sure we're gonna be on the sign. When I talked to the superintendent, he mentioned that, but those panels are usually about this.
No, I, I understand.
So, we'll have a presence on there. I think our concern is the nature of what we do and being visible from the, from the road, and a, you know.
Yeah, I get it. Any idea when that's, the pylon sign's going up?
I don't, I couldn't find that out quick enough, but.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Did you kind of complain a little bit about the orientation of the building, the way it faces different ways, so you need three signs? Or that's not it?
No, not to my knowledge. In fact, driving it today, the orientation coming from the south, you know, with, with how it sits with Taco Bell looks really nice, 'cause those two buildings are linear, they're, they're backed up to the same, and they, that looks really nice. The space between the buildings isn't a lot, so you really don't see the south-facing wall till you're on it, but the look from perspective of a drive, person driving, I think is nice from the road. So, I think the idea was to be parallel with Taco Bell coming from the south. Coming from the north is totally different, because now, sign is facing away from you, which is.
No, it's, it's actually, your sign is gonna be facing the road, correct?
We have.
Whether it's away from you, coming from one direction, or closer than the other one.
We have a west-facing, the actual main entrance is on the south side. It faces Taco Bell, that's our main entrance. It's, it's a two, you know, there's two.
Yeah, I know. I mean, you're gonna have three or four ways you can get into your property.
Yeah, just two.
But, you, you know, my point is, we allow one building sign and one monument sign, because usually the people put it right towards the road, because that's where the cars are gonna come by. Now, every, every building that we've ever talked about here can say, gee, if you're coming from the south, you can't see it till you get in front of it, or you're coming from the north. But that's not the point. The point is one building-mounted sign. If you wanna point it south, point it that way. You wanna point it north, point it that way. But if you point it towards the road, that's what everybody has, and everybody has the same problem you have. And we have to kinda look for a unique situation in order to grant more signs. And so far, I have not heard a unique situation, other than we're big and we wanna have signs all over the place.
And it's, I'll just reiterate, my concern is not so much that, as it is, I just, from where I'm sitting, there's a lot of unanswered questions. I understand you have a grand opening, you're gonna get certainly some signage, but I just, I just don't know that we have enough to justify what you're asking for, and obviously, you, there's nothing to prevent you from, well, I know we have some time limits, but from coming in and filing, and we'd be, you know, we have rules that you have to, you can't keep coming in and asking for the same thing time and time again, as long as it's a different application.
I'm sure we wouldn't do that.
Well, but you never know what business is gonna be. A year from now, you might be doing great and say, geez, we really didn't need the signs, or, or vice versa. You know, we, we have, this board and staff has done a really good job, I think, of handling, trying to help the businesses in and around that plaza. Frankly, there are some people that are concerned about the number of signs going up. We, we have to kinda keep that balanced. There's a Dollar Tree further south that I think we gave free.
Oh, I think we gave two.
Is it two?
Well, the one on the front of that Dollar Tree is like.
And a free standing.
The size of our, front of our building, by the way.
Yeah, but they don't, they're not gonna, nobody can enter that property from the rear.
Right.
And that's closer to the intersection, which is an odd-shaped intersection. So, there are, and I'd love for you to be able to make those points, but you're not there yet, I guess is what I'm saying, so I.
Well, I'm curious, you know, because I came, the director of our business usually attends these meetings, couldn't be here because he's flying out in the morning, so this is, this is my lucky day, so.
Sure.
But I'm curious where this information came from, and I wonder if there had been an application already presented from Blink Signs for this, to indicate why they would, why they would tell me that they already mapped out the zoning restrictions, they already said that there are maximum sign area of 240. So, I mean, is there any way we can review and understand if there's already an application, or if there was one? or if there was one presented? 'Cause some, I didn't get this, I didn't make this stuff up.
No, there, that, this is the first time we've heard this application. I don't know if there have been conversations in town hall with staff or not, but the first time that this board has entertained us.
Somebody gave some misinformation.
Yeah, go ahead.
I got a question, more, more for Andy. Is this, is this building that's being built, is this part of the Baytown development's plan? Is that's, what, was it part of their master plan for a building there, and hence it's part of their sign package, and part of the same overall presentation we received from them?
Yeah, I think they consider it to be part of that complex.
Okay.
It's a separate parcel, but...
But it's part of the same master plan that we saw when they presented the, you know, the, the signage, and said, this is what we see for this whole area, and this is our expectations for who's gonna come forward for variances, and what we expect tenants to have?
Yes.
And they knew that there was only one pylon allowed, one freestanding sign?
Who knew?
The Baytown. When they committed to that?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's all, just, just checking that, that's kind of, this is part of the same area.
What Andres is talking about is, the owner of that property came in six months ago, five months ago, with a whole sign, which we asked them to do...
For years.
And they've been working on it for a long time, with a whole sign package for the interior of the plaza. There's gonna be wayfaring signs, there's gonna be identification signs when you come to, let's, let's say a crossroads, as you're in the service road, with tenant signs on them.
Right.
So, there, there are gonna be signs that say Verizon this way, or Pizza Hut that way, whatever the case may be. And you'll benefit from that as well.
But is there, is there a possibility that this was born out of that?
Yeah, I, I mean, the communications between the, the owner of the plaza and someone, and don't take this offense, hired you, is something else. I mean, I, I don't know what happened, but that's what, that's what the owner of the plaza should be doing, is informing you of what you're allowed, okay? Because then you can come in here and then really have the information that it's one sign and one sign, not two signs, or, this is where the confusion, I think, is coming in.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, I just wanted to make the point, basically what Joe just said, that the, the owner of Baytown knew or should've known that this, and should've told you that, that this was a restriction on your ability to, to put that building up and to advertise. Whether he did or not, we don't know, but it was, they knew about it.
Yeah, they may have, they may have, and, and nonetheless, Verizon's still making the request, which, which they're entitled to, they're entitled to do.
So, right now, we're entitled to, how many square foot on one side of the building?
Well, you can have one sign on the building, wherever you choose. The size of the sign is determined by the south frontage, and we determine that to be equal to 100 square feet of signage. So you can have one, 100 square foot sign by code, anywhere in the building. Just on the west side.
All right, I thought I heard south.
Yeah, maybe, I misspoke.
It's west facing, I, it's west, but I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
So if that, if that plaza pylon sign weren't gonna go there, you could have that building mounted sign that Andy just referenced, and a pylon sign of a certain size as well. So, okay. All right, anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up.
I'm Alan Rainbow from Baldwin, the DeMarco Group. Just sitting casually in the audience, and thought maybe that I might be able to answer some questions, or maybe clarify any issues that may exist. One thing for the record, though, an administrative error in the application listing Chris Fogarty as a owner of the property. Chris is nothing more than the person that filled out the application for, for the actual 1930 Empire Boulevard Associates LLC, so...
I didn't think that DeMarco sold it. Nor today, I'm sure.
Otherwise, we've got some kind of odd employee incentive program, that I'm not aware of. So, you know, the, the content of the application, what's being discussed tonight, is somewhat foreign to me, but, you know, it, the, I guess one of the critical issues is, what do we consider the frontage of the building? It's either gonna measure 50 feet, or it's gonna measure 60 feet for, dedicated for Verizon. So, you know, that, meaning the difference between 100 square feet or 120 square feet of eligible signage, so... But I don't know if there's anything that I can help clarify for the board. The one concern that I do have, we have not had open discussions with Verizon as yet for the to-be-built pylon sign that will be entering off of Empire Boulevard adjacent to the building that's under construction right now. We have not approached Verizon about that, principally because we don't know the construction timeframe for that pylon. Right now, the focus is for us to get sign cabinets up on the monolith sign at the main entrance off of Empire. After that phase is complete, then we plan to go to construction for the two new pylons, and then a general reconfiguration of the existing pylon sign on Brant Point. So, that's somewhat the sequence, but whether or not that, it's doubtful that pylon sign's gonna be erected in time to be of any assistance to Verizon.
Well, by September 7th.
Correct.
At some point, if it's erected and they're on it, they're gonna, they're gonna be, is Verizon gonna go on the one that's first in line, by the, by the big entrance?
No.
If you will?
No.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, so, now I wanna make sure that I understand, what is the maximum square footage for the one building sign there allowed? I wanna, I'd like everybody here to be at least, understand where Andy's coming from on that, even if you disagree with the number.
Well, I determined it to be 100 square feet, based on the west frontage, which I determined to be the, the main entrance.
And that's facing Empire Boulevard?
Correct.
Do you guys agree that that front lineage of the building is, that would make it 50 feet? Right? If I'm doing my math right, 50 times two is 100. You guys, it is 50. Yes?
I don't have that dimensional snap in front of me, but I believe it is, and I think what Alan's referring to is, from that front corner to the next tenant is 60.
Correct, and that, that being where the primary entrance to the, to the business will be. There's, that's a 60-foot dimension on that side of the building, half, half of the total depth of the building, essentially, so, so 50 or 60.
And...
Yes, that's debatable.
Well, the difference there is 100 versus 120 anyway.
Correct.
Right?
20 square feet.
So, honestly, that's, that's something I think we could deal with. Okay. All right, anything else from the board?
Computer bro.
Anyone else in the audience? Thanks for, I don't know how I missed you back there, thanks for coming up.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Rochester Gas and Electric, 89 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14649. Request an expansion to a pre-existing non-conforming use under section 250-7.13 of the code to allow a cold storage building addition, and parking lot expansion at 1270 Plank Road. The property is owned by Rochester Gas and Electric, and is owned Rural Agricultural-2, SBL number 095.03-1-33, application number 18Z-0043.
Maybe four. Little heavy.
Yeah. Good evening, anyone, everyone. I'm Laura Waddams, I'm an engineer at La Bella Associates at 300 State Street in Rochester. I'm here on behalf of Rochester Gas and Electric, for their Plank Road facility at 1270 Plank Road. They're looking to do an expansion on their existing building. This building is a pre-existing non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming use. Like you said, it's a commercial property within a residential district. So the new addition to the building is going to go on the east side of the building. It's about a 1,900 square foot cold storage addition, so the whole side, whole east side of the building is completely open. The other two north and south sides are closed. So, the new building is going to match the existing building, I think our architects called it an almond color. So it will have the same metal siding, same galvanized roof, same CMU block up four feet, so it'll look pretty seamless with the new, or the existing building. Our GNE does need this storage, they're running out of interior space for all of their equipment, and we know Rochester winters, so any covered storage, additional covered storage that they, they just need the existing, or they need the new space for their trucks that they have on that property. Part of this plan is also to add a small 12-car parking lot for visitors, and overflow parking for the facility, and the parking lot also has a small sidewalk up to the office space into the building. You can kind of see on this pictometry image that, you know, all of the, this is probably taken either in late fall or early spring, because of the tree line there. You can see all of the trees back here, and on the sides, there's actually evergreen trees here, and there's actually quite a tall berm right here to kind of hide this building from the road, from Plank Road. Do you guys have any questions?
Can you, this is a pre-existing non-conforming, can you talk a little bit about how, you know, one of the things that we look for, actually the major point, is bringing this into more compliance with the zone, you know, the neighborhood it's in, where it's, you know, set. How's this, you know, parking lot expansion and building expansion, what are you doing to bring it more into compliance?
I mean, the new building addition is not going to be as tall as the existing building. I think the existing building is 20 feet at its peak, this new one is gonna be 16, and slope down towards the pavement out here, and with gutters, we're gonna keep all the stormwater contained, and then into existing piping. So, you know, other than that, the, the new parking lot, they just, they need the parking, people are parking on the lawn, tearing up the lawn, just keep everything contained, ease of maintenance, things like that.
Okay. Have these plans been before any other boards?
Yes, they have been before the planning board as well.
And what did the planning board do in regards to these?
They issued approval with conditions.
Okay, so they have done a site plan review, they're in agreement that this is, you know...
And the conditions are, you know, there's a couple of questions from engineering that we're addressing, and a couple of, you know, erosion control, things like that, that we're meeting. So, once those get sent back to the engineering staff and planning staff, they will be reviewed again at that point.
Okay, and I wanna make a point, you said that currently people are just parking in the lawns there, and various other places that are not designated parking areas?
Right, this parking lot back here tends to get full, so, especially visitors, too, this whole area right through here is completely fenced off. If you don't have a R G N E badge, you can't badge into that area, so, you know, some visitors are parking in this area, but this is the office.
Right, so they tend to park in the driveways going in along the edges? Okay.
Along the edges here, ruts up everything, so, keep everything looking nice and neat. Small parking lot, we originally had plans for a bigger one, kinda wanted to minimize the impacts as much as we could, so...
Okay. That's all I have. Go ahead.
Why would, if you open those gates, why would people come? In other words, I know we used to go to Ghanai and see what the plant does, okay, a nuclear powerhouse, but what people would come and visit there, for what reason? To see what?
I mean, me, you know, I, I don't have badge access, things like that. It's people that are coming to meet with our GNE that might not have access. You know, current, you know, it could be future employees, it could be things like that.
But what you're saying is, that's a restricted area, 'cause I know Ghanai, you have to have a nuclear clearance, like I have.
Right.
What clearance do you have to have to go through that gate over there?
You have to be an R G N E employee.
Okay, so, but that's, okay, but you now say visitors are visiting and parking on the grass.
Right.
Visitors that are employed by R G N E, or visitors of, like me?
Well, it could be both. You know, if this parking lot is full in the back, it could be R G N E employees, but if it's not full in the back, R G N E employees would park back through the fences, but, you know, any other people that would not need to go through the secure area would park in this area.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, again, tell me what's gonna be stored in this new extension?
So, they are running out of space, all of this actually is, they're kind of like open base, so, all of these are open base, all of these are open base, and all of these are open base. They're just running out of space. So they need that for additional vehicles, it'll be big enough to hold additional vehicles and other, you know, equipment that can't be out to the elements.
So, are these vehicles and equipment being stored outside now?
They are.
So this would bring it, sort into greater compliance, because now you're giving them protection from, and visually, they're be, they'll be contained, whereas before, they'll be outside.
Sure, yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
I just wanna be sure that all the buffering, the foliage is gonna stay.
Absolutely, yep.
So, to the east, you have the farm market, I think, right? To the north, vacant land, and then to the west, there's, it looks like a retention pond of some sort.
Right.
Okay, and is it, is there a, is that a residential home?
Yes, this is a residence, right there.
Okay. Any word from that neighbor on this?
We, as La Bella, have not necessarily spoken to them, I can't speak for R G N E.
So you're not aware of...
I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay. And what, can you describe what goes on in the property, what does R G N E do there?
It's a lot of maintenance for their vehicles, storage for their vehicles, they have a lot of those, the big trucks with the lifts, with the buckets on them.
Yeah.
All of those are housed in here, this is all transformer storage out here.
Okay.
You can kind of see utility pole storage out there.
So it's almost, is it almost like a staging area, workers coming in the morning?
Yep, I think they might clock in there.
In a car, presumably, and then get their R G N E truck and head out.
Exactly, yep.
To do what they do. Okay.
Would those transformers be stored on, in that new facility, then?
No.
They would still remain outside?
Those would stay outside.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think that was, well, that's the last application, the hearings will be adjourned, we'll take a brief recess, about five minutes, and reconvene in the back of the room. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.
Another way to do it.
Step by step, by step?
Yeah, we can do that.
It's a lot easier when you print it for us.
Yeah, yeah.
They're on, on the computer.
In terms of undesirable change, there was no undesirable change, we were able to find. There was no detriment. This variance, that be granted, the shed will be the same color, same siding as, as the house, same roofing, so it'll match the area. The benefits could be sought by applicants, not easily. The benefit, you know, the applicant could find a different way to have the shed in a different area without the variance, but it would require more and more of a financial burden in terms of bringing in fill and then regrading the yard, and then also needing a ramp to get into the shed as well. She said she wouldn't be able to walk up steps to get into it. It's not a substantial variance. In comparison to the size of the shed, it's not a large shed, so the amount of space that's going to be actually affected is minimal. The physical impact is pretty similar to the environmental, we talked about undesirable change. If we were not to allow this, the physical environment would be changed because we would be changing the contours of the land to be able to have a flat area for a shed. The alleged difficulty is self-created because the applicant, in a sense, the placement has, has chosen to place it here, but it's also due to the environmental conditions.
Okay. You get all that? Okay, good, good. So we have a motion to approve on those findings and did we get a second?
Yes.
Mike.
All right, Mike, second, all those in favor? Okay, and once again, I recuse their abstain because I wasn't here. All right, so that's approved for nothing. Number two.
Yeah, not here, you want me to go?
He's here.
He's here?
He's here. I think there's quite a bit of buffering on this property, but I also think that there's quite a bit going on on this property. It's a significant structure, I think, it doesn't even meet the, doesn't meet, but it's not your typical garage extension where you extend out. It's got a side entrance for you with a, oh, seeker, sorry. Let me move that this is a type two action under seeker, no further review required.
Second.
All right, type two under seeker, motion by Mike, second by Marie, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, my motion basically is to deny. I believe that this is too big a structure for that property. There's already a lot going on there. I think it will change the character of the neighborhood. I think, to some extent, the benefit can be achieved by some other method. He's already got three storage things there, which the neighbors seem to be willing to live with. It's definitely a substantial variance, it's 66% of what's allowed. I don't think there's a physical or environmental impact to the conditions in the neighborhood, and it's obviously self-created. He bought the property knowing that the setup was what it was, and I don't think 11 cars should be stored in a residential lot. That's my motion.
Would it matter to you or change your motion at all if all three trailers went away?
No.
Change it enough, I guess.
And I also have a concern of that property being used by another owner subsequent to that. It's a lot of, it's a lot of area of building. So for that reason though...
All right, a motion to deny by Mike for the reasons stated. Did we get a second?
Not yet.
No.
Anyone willing to second that? I'll second it for discussion purposes. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, we, everybody that went up there talked about the trailers, they don't like the trailers, and, but they don't like the garage. Well, if you, you put the garage up, a couple of them trailers are going to be gone, he said that already.
Yeah.
So it seems like the people that come up to complain about the garage, really were complaining about the trailers. And if you deny the, the garage, you're going to end up with all three trailers that are illegal, and possibly more trailers. I mean, it's like nuts, Mike.
I didn't hear people, I didn't hear everybody come up and complain about the trailers.
The lady did. I think that gentleman over there didn't like the trailers, or liked to see them be moved, am I wrong? Was it you?
I didn't say nobody said that, but I didn't think everybody said that.
No, there was testimony, if you will, on both ways, yeah.
I think some people just said that they had learned to live with them as, as they were, but I don't think anyone would choose to have them there.
That's right.
And that's how I heard it as well. I would be supportive of, though, having something attached to the deed or some sort of notation.
If we approved the garage?
Correct.
Absolutely, that's what they talked about.
And I'd go as far, I wouldn't want any, any accessory trailers or things in the backyard at all.
I would agree too, no trailers, not that much.
So, the, the reason I seconded it was to have this discussion and getting the vibe that you guys, you three are not...
You hit it, but...
I did second. And not, but we're going to go ahead with the vote anyway. Mike's motion to deny, which I have seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, the motion to deny fails. Anyone else want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve it, with some stipulations.
Which are?
Yep, which are remove the trailers, all right? He can keep, I, I would say he could keep one because, or a smaller trailer, whatever it is to move the car. No?
Not, not in the backyard, no. I would say if you got, you put it in the garage.
A trailer in the garage? Okay, so the only way you vote for it is to remove all the trailers?
Yeah, me personally, yes.
It's a really large addition.
It's a big, I mean, if we're moving the things to the, from the backyard to the inside...
He can move the trailer up closer to the house and still be in compliance, he doesn't have to have it back there where people can see it.
Well, that'd be, that'd be a different thing. If we said park the trailer behind the garage?
Okay, yeah, whatever. I mean, he just wants one for moving the vehicles, that's all, which I understand. I mean...
And that can't fit in the garage?
It, yeah, it won't fit in the garage, yeah, it can't, it's impossible to.
They're too big to fit in a garage.
Would you move it up closer to the house?
Not my house.
Oh, Dennis, you can move it up closer to your house somewhere where it's, you know, legal?
I would say behind the garage.
Okay, behind the garage?
Potentially, I mean, it would be a garage door.
Okay. Where it's, it's legal, okay?
Right. Continue with your motion to approve that. You've already, okay.
That's added to it.
Uh huh.
Okay.
So move it behind the garage?
Yep.
All right. What else? What about the restrictions on the use?
Oh, okay.
Filing of the, of the variance with the clerk's office?
Yep, we'll file it with the, the variance with the clerk's office that it's only be used to store his personal cars and does not go with the property, correct? We'll just make it where it's just a garage. Is that what you're saying?
They'll accept it for filing, I imagine, I...
Yeah, but, so, you want to restrict it to storage of items by the homeowner?
Personal use by homeowner.
No commercial use allowed.
Yeah, that's required by COE, you can go with commercial use.
Right. Something more you want to add?
No. That didn't really sound like a request, though, Joe, that...
Well, it was, you want something else?
No, no, no.
I mean, I didn't understand how you want, you're the lawyer, I'm a plumber. You got to word it the way it's a lawyerly thing, you know?
You should see me try to fix a leaky faucet.
Yeah, you're right, I've been over it.
Try to talk it into working right.
So she's seconded.
All right, so why don't you guys read back the, Joe's proposed conditions, just so we're clear. What you have?
I haven't been writing it down because I listened to the recording.
Okay.
Well, you motioned to approve the garage and move the trailer behind the garage.
That's one.
Right, one trailer.
Right. And then file a variance with the clerk's office only to use, only to be used for storing anybody's personal cars and no commercial use.
Just the owners.
The owners.
Sorry?
Just the owner's personal stuff.
The property owners.
Not anybody.
In other words, he's not going to lease space to somebody else to store cars.
Property owners' personal cars?
Belonging, I don't think you want to say cars either.
Or personal...
Personal belongings. I don't think you'd want to say cars, right? That's too...
That's too, that's what he said.
Belonging and no commercial use.
Right.
You going through the findings, Joe?
Whether the undesirable change produced in the character in the neighborhood, I say no, because it's just another attached garage in the back that very, very few will seek. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method? He did, he put trailers on and people ain't happy with those, now he wants to remove the trailers and do the garage. Whether the requested variance substantial, yes. Whether the proposed area variance would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, no. That's my opinion. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, everything's self-created, yes.
Okay, any further comments on those? All right, so we have a motion by Joe to approve with conditions as stated, and Marie made a second on that motion as discussed and flushed out a little bit more. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Number three.
It's you?
I, first, I'm going to make a motion that we declare this a type two action under seeker.
Second.
Further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm going to make a motion to approve. I don't think there will be an undesirable change in the neighborhood because there are other decks in the neighborhood. This is a incentive zoning, so the ability of the owner to utilize the space is somewhat limited. Same thing for the second factor. Because of the desire and the need to connect the house, deck, pool, this is the most feasible method for them to achieve that. 2.1 variance is nothing that I would consider to be substantial. There's no proof that the variance would have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Self-created is, a wise man once said everything's self-created.
I'll second if that hasn't been seconded already.
Okay, so, motion, my motion to approve the application, Mike has seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck. Number four, that's number four here, yep.
Okay, let's see, I make a motion that the seeker is...
Also type two.
Also type two, okay.
I'll second that. Further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to accept this variance or grant the variance for that porch. I don't believe there'll be any undesirable change produced in the neighborhood by the applicant, be achieved by some other method. I don't know how, I mean, if you want to sit on a front porch and you don't have one, I guess that's what you have to do. Whether the area variance substantial, no, it's not. Proposed area variance would have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, no. And again, as a wise man said, if it was self-created, everything is.
Yeah, I would only add, I guess for the first factor, that there are other porches, front porches in the neighborhood. And the issue with the right-of-way versus the street, from an aesthetic standpoint, which I guess would be also under number one.
Yeah.
Most people would view it from the street rather than the right-of-way in terms of a physical setback, so, okay. So we have a motion to approve and we got a second?
No.
I'll second it. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Number five.
Okay, I make a motion that this is a, under seeker, this is a type two requiring no further action.
Second.
Any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this conditional use permit, but with several conditions.
Okay.
First, there really does have to be a fence. There should be absolutely no overnight boarding or any weekend day spa. There should be absolutely no overnight boarding or any weekend day spa, daycare weekends. I think that we should review this or bring it back if there are any noise complaints.
Time frame?
I think six months is fair.
Only if there's complaints?
Only if there's complaints.
That, I, that could be, would you include in the word complaints, a concern expressed by staff, or would it be a neighbor?
Well, I think that the-
I don't know if that's why you asked the question.
I think that the neighbors would be contacting the staff, right?
One would think, but not all of them.
I was just asking, did you just want to bring them back in six months regardless?
Oh, I see.
Or, you just want to wait to see if there's any complaints and then-
Would they have to pay a fee to come back? Would they have to pay, like, an application fee to come back? Because if that was the case, I'd say no, just only if there is concern.
Right, I don't want to cause any undue financial cost.
We all hope it works out, so.
So those would be the conditions. Are there any other conditions that anyone would ask?
I think one thing we spoke of is potentially limiting the number of-
Outside.
Outside dogs at any one time.
Right. Unfortunately, I don't know what that number is. So I think I would just ask that the owners be very cognizant of any potential noise. I am sensitive to the fact that there's a right to you, but we also want to be friendly to your business, and we're glad it's going well for you. In terms of the requirements or the criteria for a conditional use permit, I do think it's in harmony with what's already there, going on. I think that there is not necessarily a detriment to the adjacent properties. There haven't been any complaints so far, so let's just see how it's going. And again, I don't think it's detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of anyone either. So I wish you the best.
I'm just going to second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
No offense, but hopefully we won't see you again?
I know.
Not in here, anyway. Okay. Let's see, number six, right here? Is it going to be quick or no?
Yeah.
All right, number six.
First, I move this to type-two action under seeker and no further review necessary.
Second. All those in favor?
I guess I'll take these one at a time. I'm going to move to grant the variance for the setback department. I don't believe there's going to be an undesirable change in the neighborhood. It's business, general business, there's businesses all around the property. They can't really receive, there's no other place to put this walk-in cooler, and they definitely need it, other than that location. It's substantial, but I don't think that in and of itself should cause us to consider denying it. I don't think it'll have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Obviously, it was self-created, as a wise man once said. And I also want to note that we approved a cooler for a similar business that was adjoining the property about four months ago, so.
I wanted to ask about that. I wrote a note because that's, nothing's, they've been working on that, you're talking about Valero?
Yeah.
They've been working on it, and then all of a sudden it seems like it stopped.
Nothing going on there at all.
So, and we have no idea why or anything?
There was a truck there today or yesterday.
There was?
I got the feeling your poor house will be there.
Really, sort of work to go on.
Yeah, and circle, I got circle, what's it, circle, plaza circle, a little used road near my own depot, so, so it is, it's going to be nothing.
All right, so on the variance for setback, we have a motion to approve and based upon the findings, the mic's delineated. Further discussion? And we have a second on that, right?
Who seconded?
I did. Who's?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, with regard to the lot coverage, I'm going to move to, to grant the variance on that. 65% required, they're at 24.2, it's going down to 23.1. I defy anybody to be able to delineate the difference that that's going to make. If you want me to go through, I don't think it's, for that reason, it's so small that it's not going to produce any undesirable change in the neighborhood.
Right. Okay.
I go through them all, I go through them all.
No. There's a second.
I just want to make sure he's done.
Self-created, by the way.
It is self-created. All right, so we have a motion to approve the minimal variance requested, and no adverse effects or anything along those lines, and I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number seven. You guys heard me talk nauseam about this one, and I, first, we'll make a motion that we declare this an unlisted action under seeker, and that we declare a negative declaration.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, as I was getting to before I caught myself on the seeker stuff, I just think it's, I just have a feeling that it's premature here. There are a lot of unanswered questions, and I know they want to open, and I get that, so I'm willing to make a motion to allow them more signage than is permitted because of that road and the speed on the road, but I'm not exactly sure what they're asking in that regard. Three, no.
You just table it.
Well-
You don't let them ask, you know?
The applicant wanted to table it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, where is the applicant? I'm trying to do something to, you know, I don't want to move forward with an application and it gets denied. I think, you know, and I, at the same time, I'm keenly aware, why don't you guys come up here? Keenly aware of your, your starting dates and your desire. I think it's, we'll let everybody chime in here, but I think if you have an application with a little more certainty-
Agreed.
-then we'll work with you, but I will tell you right now, I wouldn't, on this particular location, from what I see it, because of the stoplights and the other buildings nearby, I don't, I personally don't think I'm going to be in favor of three building signs.
Right, I would agree.
Two, probably, yeah, but I'd like to know, Verizon going to be on that pylon on that property? If you can answer that, if you can't answer that because of business reasons, understood, but you're also going to be benefiting from some of the wayfaring and really having a number of entrances to that property. So, from where I'm sitting, and if people aren't agreeing, we are flexible, willing to be, but this is certainly too much with the lack of information we have now, and frankly, even if we had the information, probably, three is probably going to be too much.
It would help to revisit where the pylon sign's going and the size of it again, even though we approved it. If you could supply that information, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
I mean, my personal view is that there is a very comprehensive sign package that was developed for this area, and if we're going to start deviating outside of that, I guess that'd defeat the purpose of having a comprehensive sign package that we've been asking for, for a long time, so we wouldn't have to keep granting variances over and over again for every business.
And the quicker you can get back with Andy on this, I think, the better, because that'll come out to us, and we may even be able to have some discourse before our August meeting.
That's a motion to table?
It is a motion to table.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion on that?
No, I agree with Andres. We had approved a very comprehensive sign package.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to table.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Just ask one question, when is the, is there an August variance meeting, and when is that?
Yes, and I don't know, but somebody here does.
But I could probably, if I were to move quickly and get some information-
I think we're past, we're past the deadline.
But it's a table, it's a table matter.
What are we calling it?
Right?
It's August 16.
August 16.
Third, so it's typically the third Thursday, and it'll be 6:30 we'll hear this one.
I appreciate it, and I apologize for, I was only-
No, I got you.
... on board with the information that was given to me.
Of course.
It was succinct, so I wasn't making stuff up, but it just was incorrect, so.
All right.
No problem.
We'll see it, we'll see in August. Thanks, you too. Number eight.
Okay, this is a unlisted action. I'm going to make a negative declaration. There would be no significant adverse environmental impacts under seeker.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then for the application, I'm going to make a motion to approve the application, what's that called, conditional, or expansion of pre-existing non-conforming. This applicant demonstrated that the, they're currently parking on the lawns, parking on the driveways, on the sides of the driveways coming in. They will be setting up designated parking for this. This will eliminate, I guess, the eyes are parking down the driveway in the front, and also open up the driveway to be a safer route to the back for any kind of vehicles that need to get back there. Currently, the addition will sit, that they're building will sit behind the existing structure, so you won't actually see that, so it will not have any negative impact as well. Vehicles that are parked out in the back lots that you can see will be, will be moving inside, bringing the area more into, into compliance with more of a residential area. You've noted agriculture, it still will bring more vehicles and equipment inside for that space, so for that, I move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, so I think the most, we've learned here, so the most important factor with applications like this is how does it come more into conformity? You've touched on that, but just for the, your guys' purposes, park, the parking situation will improve by people parking on paved services rather than-
Designated, yeah, designated spots, so it's, we know where we're parking, where we're not.
Stormwater upgrades according to the, our memo, sidewalks as well. And nobody's going to be parking on old Broncroft, Broncroft to get here either. That's always a good thing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we took care of the tabled one, so we're good. Any other business? All right, then we will stand adjourned, and we took care of the minutes too, right?
Yep.
Can I, can I ask about the Valley Green?
Yes.
The interpretation? What happened there?
Two to two, so from a legal standpoint, it's a de facto denial.
Correct.
Because of appellate jurisdiction, so when there's a two-two, or, I don't know what it's, it's not a denial.
So, you know, well, we, well, I'll ask you a question. Why did we go through that dog and pony show about backyards if we had to vote on the other one anyway?
Can we adjourn?
Why are we asking that question?
I think we did adjourn.
Did we?
No, well, yeah, well, we did, but then Andy asked, so are we, are we all set?
This is a two-two, so it's a denial on that one. It's not, the other, the other time where we had a two-two vote, it was a non-action because it wasn't appellate jurisdiction. It was a expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming, so in that case, there was no action here.
So the, the motion was a determinate, the determination that I was correct?
The appeal was denied, so.
Right, so the applicant appealed your decision, and that was not a penalty, you know, so they, they, we, basically, with you.
Yeah, but the motion was to uphold your interpretation, right?